Mrs. Briggs?
Here.
Mr. Cathol?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Neal? Dr. Parsons?
Here.
Mr. Peeden?
Here.
Mr. Steele?
Here.
Ms. Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. West Warner?
Here.
Mrs. Wright?
At this time, I will entertain a motion to go into exec session.
Stand with me.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Pass your names now and in exec session.
Regular session. Ms. Troublefield, would you please take roles?
Mrs. Briggs?
Yeah.
Mr. Cathel?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Neal? Dr. Parsons?
Here.
Mr. Peeden?
Here.
Mr. Steele?
Here.
Ms. Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. West Warner?
Here.
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
We have 3.02. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda for September 22nd, 2025.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the cloud, the nine states of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
3.04, I believe we have Sussex Central Student Government.
Hello, my name is Peyton Ritchie and I'm the Executive Board President at Sussex Central High School. And I'm just here to tell you about a couple of things happening at our school or have already happened. So first off, I wanted to talk about the new building. The overall attitude of the new school has been really great, except when we get lost on our way to class. So, and then on August 28th, we had our senior sunrise. It was a great bonding experience for our class and a bunch of people showed up. I think it was about 75 and it was really successful. And then Senior Parent Night will be held this Wednesday in the Sussex Central High School cafeteria from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. The school counseling department will be providing important information about senior year. And there will be a paying for college presentation by a Stand By Me representative. And then for sports, our football team is two and one. Our volleyball team is three and two and they've beat two undefeated teams, Cape and Lake Forest. And then for field hockey, they are two and three and our boys soccer team is undefeated. Um, progress reports go out October 4th and October 1st, sorry, and will be available on Infinite Campus. We've had a very productive first student council meeting where we decided the homecoming theme, which will be disco fever. And then JROTC will have one of its biggest community service projects of the fall. On October 3rd and 4th, cadets will support the Wings and Wheels Air and Car Show. And on October 18th, the Battalion Service Learning Team is conducting an adopt a highway mission along Airport Road in Georgetown. Cadets are also assisting in the operation of the Haunted Trail at Holly Lake Campground on October 18th. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 3.05, 3.06, I'll entertain a motion to approve the August 22nd, 2025 regular meeting and executive session minutes.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Recognition, Dr. Owens.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Two students recognized this evening, both from Southern Delaware School of the Arts. Francesca Calagire and Nicholas Rubino were named first place recipients of the Delaware Music Educator Association's Young Composer Competition. So if you could, if those two students could join us up on the stage, we have a little bit of a different setup here. You could come on up and we'll give you your recognitions. Mr. Steele, if you could join me and Mrs. Argo, if you could join us as well. Thank you.
Hey, we're now at 5.01, public session, our public comments. School board welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during public comment sessions at the beginning and end of each public session. Members of the public speaking as individuals or as a member who represents an organization will be allotted up to three minutes. As per board policy, BDDH, in order to comply with the First Amendment, the board will not entertain protracted public comment within favor of or against a staff member. If a speaker makes his defamatory statements or invades the privacy rights of a student. If a speaker makes his defamatory statements or invades the privacy rights of a student or employee, speaker is responsible for such statements and may be held liable. We thank you for adhering to this policy when sharing public comments.
Okay, two signed up in person. First is Rick Raditovich.
Thank you. Rick Raditovich, Frankfurt, Delaware, resident of the school district. As a concerned citizen who has attended the last five I R S D board meetings and four committee meetings, I've heard the term referendum used frequently and casually. Discussions often pivot to questions like, how can we pass a referendum, or how do we convince the community to support a referendum? This rhetoric signals a troubling mindset, one that assumes that more funding is the only solution. I urge the administration, the school board, teachers, union, and stakeholders to chart a different course. A referendum is not a strategy, it's an admission of failure. It suggests a failure to practice fiscal responsibility, to manage expenses effectively, and to prioritize the community's trust. When spending other people's money, there's little incentive to be prudent. I ask you this question, and this should be asked at every instance. If this were your personal budget, would you make the same spending choices? Consider the fifty-two thousand dollar spending on a modified cable in the I T area, which was announced at last month's finance committee meeting. It was quote, zero one three two nine, due to requested changes in the original design. This isn't an isolated incident, but a symptom of deeper issues, bloat, oversight, lapses in decisions, and lack of accountability. These missteps erode public confidence. The community's frustration is evident. Two referendums have failed, with the second rejected by an even wider margin. Yet the board responded with a ten percent increase, disregarding the electorate's clear message. This breach of trust demands accountability. Every expenditure must be scrutinized and wasteful spending must be cut before asking taxpayers for more money. I challenge each of you, board members, administrators, and union leaders, to treat the district's budget as your own. Plan strategically, prioritize wisely, and demonstrate fiscal discipline. A referendum should be a last resort, not a default. Every prove to the community that you can manage resources responsibly and rebuild the trust you've lost. In closing, I challenge each of you to think differently. Challenge the status quo. To do something because, quote, "It's the way it's been done in the past," is an insult to the collective intelligence in this room. Creativity, ingenuity, and a commitment to fiscal discipline is how we fix the challenges within the I R S D school system.
Thirty seconds.
I call on each of you to reflect deeply and act decisively. What I have trouble comprehending is the fact that you all voted for a ten percent increase in taxes for the coming school year without having a budget in place and knowing how much is truly needed. Show us that the I R S D school system can succeed without relying on a referendum. The community is watching. Thank you. Christina Byerly?
Hi. Good evening, members of the board, faculty, and community. My name is Christina Byerly. I'm here tonight to express my disappointment with a recent decision that has deeply impacted my son Seth and the Unified Flag Football Team. Seth is a recent graduate of Indian River High School and was a proud member of the twenty twenty-four Delaware State Championship Football Flag Football and Unified Basketball Teams. Those experiences gave him not only a sense of accomplishment, but also a deep appreciation for teamwork, inclusion, and the bonds that unified sports create between athletes and partners. Seth decided early on last season that he wanted to give back. He is now a full-time college student. He works part-time and arranged his class and work schedules to be able to dedicate his free time to assist the athletes and partners who helped make last year so special. He recruited new partners and connected with athletes in preparation for the twenty twenty-five season. Unfortunately, on the day of tryouts, he was told that he was not allowed to volunteer, period. The reason given was a policy that volunteers must be twenty-one. To this day, we have not been able to find this policy in writing. Instead, we've been told that's the way it's always been. To make matters worse, we are well aware of several others under age twenty-one who were permitted to volunteer for other sports programs in this district in recent years. That decision is hard to understand and even harder to justify. Unified programs are built on the principles of inclusion, respect, pride, building confidence and friendships, increasing acceptance and reducing stigma by combining individuals with and without intellectual disabilities. If the concern is safety, Seth is willing to do whatever is required, references, background checks, CPR training, you name it, whatever the district needs. Turning away a qualified young adult who is willing to volunteer, to mentor, and to support his peers goes against the very same values that these programs stand for. My family and I have supported and volunteered for the Indian River School District in various capacities for many, many years. We have instilled in them the importance of giving back to our community. Seth isn't asking for pay or recognition. He's asking simply to give his time, his energy, and his heart to a program that changed his life. The athletes and partners deserve this support. By denying him this opportunity, I feel the Indian River School District is not saying no to inclusivity, but also depriving the team of a mentor who knows firsthand what it takes to succeed as a unified partner and leader. I respectfully ask the board to reconsider this decision.
Twenty seconds.
And to find a way for young alumni like Seth to remain involved. These programs thrive when students and graduates continue this cycle of support. Allowing Seth the opportunity to volunteer would strengthen the team, enrich the program, and show our community that Indian River values inclusion, not just in words, but in action. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dr. Owens, is that something that we're going to be discussing today?
Yeah, we'll discuss it internally and I can give an update to the board.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Steele, per House Bill sixty-four, we are now offering remote public comment that's in a new code. So our I T team has worked to enhance what we've been, been live streaming for some time now, but also now allowable is remote comment. So we do have a Zoom link. There was the ability to sign up ahead of time. I don't believe we had anyone that signed up ahead of time. But I would ask if there's someone viewing online that would like to provide remote public comment, to please use the Zoom option to raise your hand in the room, and our team will monitor. We'll give that a few seconds to see if we have any folks that want to participate. Okay, thank you. That concludes public comment.
Okay, moving on, six point zero one, School Choice Applications, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yes, school choice applications are attached within board docs. Happy to answer any questions. So a total of eight applications this evening, all recommendations for accept, and then we would ask for board action this evening.
Make a motion to accept the school choice applications.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six Administrative Organizational Plan.
Yes, per policy, the organizational plan is provided to the board annually for review questions and ultimately board action during our board meeting. So again, happy to answer any questions with this organizational plan and with consideration this evening.
I move that we accept the organizational structure presented.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Indian River School District Survey.
Thank you. In recent weeks, we've discussed a survey that can go out to not only our staff, but also our community, asking for feedback. We certainly want to develop a survey in a manner that gives us a great deal of insight into the feelings of our community and staff. I want to thank Mrs. Taylor. She gave us a bit of a draft recently, and we did ask the board to consider that. So I want to just open it back up this evening for any questions, feedback, and then our team internally will take the questions that were provided and format this in a way that we think would be feasible for next month for board review and potential opportunities to move forward. So open it up for board discussion.
Okay, I would recommend anybody, if you have any questions or any additions to Ms. Taylor, to please contact her. If you don't have it in your mind tonight, if you think of something next few days, try to get it to her because we really want to get this mall rolling for next month.
Is it possible to share the survey with the board? I don't know. I just remember it at the meeting, but if it could be emailed or?
We'll share the document itself.
Great.
And get approval from the board before we administer that.
Thank you.
So basically, this tool for those in the audience is to connect with the staff, the families, and of course also the students to let them know that the board really cares and we're here to support them. And we want this tool to be an effective communication device between us and them so that we can really try to fill in the gaps and also try to have starting points on school improvement and district improvement. So we're hoping that this survey will give us the information we need to better act as a board fulfilling that need.
Any questions? Okay, this is a discussion item only. This is not going to be an actionable item this evening, just discussion only. So if there are no other questions there, we will move on to six point zero five, the G W Carver front sign replacement. Is that right? I'm sorry, six point, six point oh four, fiscal year twenty-six salary scales.
We're opening discussion?
We can open discussion, or we can hold a discussion if we want for the finance committee meeting, whichever we want to do.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the board presenting this information, but I guess given that we do need some more information, we'd like to hear from the employees involved. I think we should table it.
Okay, is that your motion?
My motion is to table it.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Now six point oh five, G W Carver front sign replacement.
Thank you. We discussed this at the recent Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. There was some discussion with regard to the funding for the sign. The proposal was for a new digital sign, the sign at front now. The glass covering is missing, the light bulb, the electric is having issues as well. Because there was good discussion around how to best pay for that sign, I think we table tonight, do not take action, bring back to the committee and flush that out before moving forward.
Okay, I'll need a motion to table.
So moved.
Can have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Six point oh six, Sussex Central High School Stairwell, five-wall logo.
Good evening. On your board docs for this agenda item, you will find attachments showing three options for a wall logo in stair number five of the new school. This is part of the interior signage package, and we are in need of a final decision so that we can approve the shop drawings for this item. This is our final chance to make a change before it moves to manufacture. The Night on Horseback is one of the approved athletics logos from the District Branding Guide. This subject was presented at the Buildings and Grounds Committee, at which time a request was made to show the entire horse body on the wall. So you will see that that is one of the included options. Are there any questions or comments on this?
Mr. Dooley, we're going to be voting on one, two, or three. Is that correct?
Yes.
Just to be clear, on my board docs, illustration one is the, we'll call it the half horse. Illustration two is the smaller horse, eye on the wall, and option three is the full-scale large horse taking up most of that wall.
Billy, can I ask a question about these three renderings? First, has there been a bid to see if there's a difference in cost in any of these three renderings?
So yes. You may not believe this, but so one is the sort of larger one that's down lower, Dr. Owens, you said? Okay, so I asked about the smaller one that's up high. There would be a cost savings of that because it's a smaller one. So this was, I was expecting the same reply.
Right.
They came back and said there's a thousand dollar cost savings on that one. So we can, so yeah, so you get a thousand dollar cost savings for going smaller or larger. Seems counterintuitive.
Have we also explored options? We have very talented artists in this district. We have a school of the arts. Have we socialized the idea of having our students do this mural rather than do this, outsource this for savings?
I haven't. I don't know if the district.
We have not.
Would it be something we could consider, or is time a matter that we're not even willing to consider that?
We, if the board will like us to explore that, we're absolutely, we absolutely can.
I would like them to make a motion to explore that with our students and see if they would like to tackle this. We have to have some outstanding students in the art programs at the schools who would probably love to put their name on a legacy at their school.
Before we vote on that, I have a question. It's a great point. Wasn't there a deadline that we had to submit for these renderings?
So it will push it out, you know, like, let's say that if you vote that we want the school to have the option, and then the school comes back and says, we don't want to do it, then if you were, here would be an option, you could vote to decide on one of these if the school came back and said that they didn't want to do it, we would be set up to move forward.
So I, I love the idea of students doing artwork. My concern would be safety because of how high the students have to be to paint and draw.
And time. It's going to take a lot of time to do this.
Do you, what are the costs for the three of them? And there's a cost savings in, that's the least expensive one, the large horse?
Yeah, the look, so I, so, okay, it was around six to eight thousand dollars for this logo, for this wall logo approximately. So yeah, we would save a thousand dollars on that cost if you chose to go with the largest horse logo.
Okay, seems counterintuitive that the largest horse is the least expensive one.
That I was, because I figured you might want to say, well, if, if we voted for the large horse logo, would there be a cost change? So we chased that. Yeah, they came back, but that's a deduction. I don't get that.
It seems like a win-win from what I'm hearing in the community that they like the traditional look of the full horse, not so much the three-quarter horse. And so it seems like option three, you solve all your problems. You've got the horse that I think that everybody wants. It's a large sale, and it's a cost savings, and you can get it done right away. So T, our students coming into their new school can see this beautiful mural right away every day that they enter school and just be inspired, I think, by their mascot sooner than later. So I would make the motion that we vote for number three, the full-scale horse at the least cost.
Before we follow through with Dr. Parsons, we do have another.
Okay, I'll restate the motion. I'll amend it to say, I would like to make a motion that we accept option three and give the students at the high school a whack at doing this themselves for cost savings as well as for the experience and the legacy of the school.
Okay, have a motion.
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye.
I have a question. Oh, so we're going to put a timeframe on it for how long before, I mean, how long we put it out there for students to be able to do it?
How long would be sufficient?
Which I would, I would think we'd want to if they accept it. Well, well, twofold then. One is to accept it. How long, give them a timeframe on submitting it, that they are interested in it, and then if they are interested in it, how long the timeframe will be to complete it?
So I would ask, Mr. Dooley, then, how does this impact your ability? So I would ask Mr. Dooley then, how does this impact your ability to move forward with the rest of the signage package?
The rest of it can be approved. That one item, we would wait to approve on.
Okay, okay. I would, I would like to talk with the school to get an idea of their timeframe. I'm sure they have an idea of students that may be interested in something like this. So I could follow back up next month at the board meeting and give you an update on that with a timeframe.
So can we make the motion that? Can we make the motion with?
Follow back up next month.
With what she said, with following up on it?
Want me to restate that? I would once again make a motion that we accept option three and consider that the students at the high school will be able to do this rendering themselves, given within the time constraints that they can come back with an answer before next month's board.
Okay, have a motion, have a second.
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 Okay, I have a motion, second. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Sussex Central High School change order notifications.
On your board docs for this agenda item, you will find 15 change orders which have been presented before the Buildings and Grounds Committee and which are being presented as board notifications as they are below the dollar amounts outlined under the board's procedures for change order approval thresholds. Mr. Bob Lyman with Richard Y. Johnson Construction is here to respond to any questions you might have. Absent of any questions, we are seeking school board approval at this time.
Are you seeking board approval for these change orders? Because I thought that they were just being notified.
So the way the policy reads is that they're preliminarily approved, so they are approved on the contract. And then for audit purposes, I'm going to read from the policy, for audit purposes, change order requests below a hundred thousand dollars are preliminary approved as referenced, which is what it says above, and then shall also be taken to the Board of Education at the next scheduled board meeting for formalized final approval.
So my question on that was, in looking at it and having the conversation is, if it's a preliminary one, the board has the right tonight to either, yes, those change orders, approve them or disapprove them?
No, those have already been approved for the policy. So they've been approved at the district level. Then they come for notification tonight and how the process has worked per the attorney, the board has to give the final approval as well.
But that's not how that wording says it. I think that's how we had it. It says it's a preliminary approval that has to come to the board.
Correct.
Can you read that again, please, Mr. Dooley?
Okay, well, then let me read the paragraph before it, which is a repeat of the next paragraph, which talks about the preliminary approval. So this is for change orders below fifty thousand dollars. The Board of Education formally delegates that change order requests up to fifty thousand dollars may be preliminarily approved by either the supervisor of Buildings and Grounds or the Director of Business. So the change order is approved, right? It's in the contract, it's moving forward. Then the next paragraph says, for audit purposes, change order requests below a hundred thousand dollars that are preliminary, preliminarily approved as referenced above shall also be taken to the Board of Education at the next scheduled board meeting for formalized final approval. So when the auditor comes in to check all the files for the whole project in two to three years, they're going to want to make sure that all the signatures are on the change order when it got approved, the four signatures that are required, and they're going to look for the school board's minutes that says that the change order was formally approved by the school board too. I realize that's a little legally kind of confusing, but that is what the policy says.
It is. And the discussion that we had, the finance committee meeting, is the fact that some of the things that we're looking at here, I think, are wants and are not needs. And I think somewhere along the line, you know, agreeing with tonight's speaker, we are going to have to say no to some things. And, you know, wherever we are on this, I'm not sure legally, you know, doing, of approving this tonight here, but in the future, I'm going to say this, I don't think we should be rubber stamping anything at this point in the game unless it comes to the board. Because it seems to be a lot of things on this list that I'm looking at, not all, some that are wants and not needs. And we need to save as much money as we can save, even though we've got the construction monies in hand. Doesn't hurt to save them, see if we can use them on another potential project in the future, much like this school had the opportunity to do with our dance. I just want to make my point clear. And anybody else around this board that would like to say anything any different, please say it.
I do agree with you, but would policy need to be changed because policy states they have the authority to say, we want to see it before that? Wouldn't that designate a policy change?
It probably, it probably does somewhere, somewhere down the line. And I know we're kind of, you know, we're kind of behind it on this. And, you know, we went to the meeting and found out things we didn't like. But if we have to approve it, we have to approve it. But I am going to say this, I do not want to see things come in front of me again, of extra items or things that, well, we have a new administration, they wanted this or that. No, we're just not going to do that. At least I'm not going to vote for it. And I just want to make that clear. We've got to be very careful what we do, because there's going to come a time, we're going to need to build something else in this district. And we need everybody to understand, it's going to take everybody here to do it.
What is the threshold for approving or making change orders without board approval? I think I heard you say fifty thousand, there was a hundred thousand dollars. So can we make, can this board make a change that we change that threshold from a hundred thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars, that anything over twenty-five thousand has to come before the board for approval? Are we able to do that?
That the, I think we could bring it back to policy with some options. I can tell you when this was designed back years ago, we talked to our attorney and I think Mark Dufendock was facilitating then. And it was a project of this magnitude in order to keep it rolling, keep everything moving. That was the threshold they suggested. We are coming to the end now, and Bob Lyman is here. We're getting close to the end, so there will be some additional change orders, but I understand the level of scrutiny that we want, so we can bring that policy back and then make that decision at that point.
So for now, going forward, can we place like a freeze on any change orders, that no change orders go ahead without board approval?
We had, we had basically, we had done a freeze. I don't know if it was to this level because, help me out, Mr. Dooley and Mr. Bliman, you know, there could be a change order of five thousand dollars on something small. You'll have to educate us a little bit, but I know there's smaller levels of change orders. I don't know, without your input here, what would substantially throw off your timeframes in order of continuing with the project? We have students in, so we do want to finish out the project, but can you give us an idea of the implications potentially with this?
So like, here's the scenario that will happen, like, well, and since the last committee meeting, there's change orders that have come in. So my question would be, what am I supposed to do? It sounds like what I'm hearing, if you want that to not move forward, then I can't act on those change orders, right? I would need to say, no, we can't do any of that. Meanwhile, there's a welder working in the field or an electrician, and, you know, it's, we're doing renovations on a school right now, the existing building. So those, there's going to be more of those kinds of change orders coming up because they don't know what spaghetti is going to fall out of the wall, so to speak.
Yeah, so that may not be reasonable. I think what we're hearing, like at the last finance committee or Buildings and Ground meeting, is that there's a change order for greater than fifty-two thousand dollars, which seemed really high. So if anything, maybe going forward, we can make a motion that for the remainder of the project, any change orders greater than twenty-five thousand dollars come before the board. Anything below would be, you could move forward, so to not delay your project. So is that possible? Can we do that?
I think the other concern moving forward with that is the fact that if it is a contractor, which has to do with welding, electrical, that's one thing, because that's the structure of a building. If it is additional stuff that is wanted and is wanted at the request of the school, not as a request to finish a project, then I think no matter what the limit is, it needs to come before the board. Because we just spent thirteen thousand plus dollars on wrestling mats, we spent fifty-five thousand dollars on, I think I'm right, don't hold me to the exact amount, on, I, moving the cables around, we spent eleven or twelve thousand dollars on locks. And I don't know that it was justified other than this saying, it was a different administration, and now we have a new one, but a classroom is a classroom. And you kind of put desks or tables or whatever where the cables were already dropped. Because if my memory serves me correctly, the majority of these on here didn't have anything to do with opening the school, keeping the school running. It was extras, as Mr. Steele alluded to, they were wants and not needs. So I do have my, under the report for Buildings and Ground, I do have some recommendations on there, but if you choose to move forward with them now before we make the motion, that's whatever procedure is.
I think what I'm hearing is, in going forth, we want this building to be completed with the demands that are necessary and not with things that are just, oh, that's really cool, I want to have it. So if we're going to go that route, and Mr. Dooley, we want you to be able to do your job in going forth and not feel like you're kind of lassoed in and not being able to do that. We're trying to figure out the best methodology to do that. So what is your recommendation? What will help you be able to do your job?
I think the trades work on the H-wing and the ag and maintenance building items are things that the existing thresholds should cover. The things that I put on a pile and said, we have to wait for a while, are like, for instance, the football program wants a new shed. So it's like a backyard shed, so to speak. So I haven't done anything but that. Like, I still have to get that even priced up. I have asked the state, would that be eligible for funding on the project? They've come back and said yes, right? So I've asked the state, when we run these things down with the state, the responses come back, yeah, like additional wrestling mats. There's a wrestling room in the school, so yeah, that would be covered. There's members of the board that might not like that, but at thirteen thousand dollars, that's an approval threshold that, you know, that particular item with the difference of the floor elevation that came in, that got knocked back around and the school ended up saying, we would like it to be matting material, right? Instead of pouring concrete to fill that gap up. So you know, at thirteen thousand dollars, you know, that's kind of low on the project, if you will. So that one, I make a judgment call when I'm looking at these change orders on what to bring to the superintendent and say, I think this may be a contentious item, right? So that's like the wall logos, and that's not even a price thing. And I make those kinds of judgments, and I think I have pretty good judgment, but you know, like the volleyball system and pads, there were additional sleeves that were put into that floor to hold additional volleyball courts for that school. But at that time, that the additional stands weren't put in. So, you know, to ask the state, is that covered? They're going to say, yeah, of course that's covered. So, and that's well below that threshold. So I think now the assurance media cabling mods, that was done by the time that got to me, and I didn't like the way that went down. So I don't like the fact that the school can say to the IT guy, or the IT guy can say to the contractor who's doing that, hey, we want them in that room. That comes to me at that point, and it's already done. So that's not okay with me. So I put an end to that. Like, is that the last, the last of those? Right? So they're very case-specific. And the reason why those thresholds were bumped up was because at Howard Tienis, those thresholds got reached a lot, right? So this being the largest school that was ever built in height in the state history, price-wise, those, those were bumped up. And I think that was a good decision. So you know, I think the limits are good where they're at, and I think we are exercising that that due diligence and the judgment therein. But I understand that there are board members that that just might disagree with my judgment sometimes, or might not like that. And, you know.
So would it be who of us to move forward with what you're doing, you're judging, you're making a judgment call on what will go forth, and that will then go to the superintendent? And before it comes before us, it goes through those two channels before it comes here?
And that's actually written into the policy current.
Right.
It does say that.
So that needs to be consistently done.
Right. So like, outside of what the thresholds are, if there's something that I kind of red flag in my mind, I run it before Dr. Owens, he says, yeah, that's something that we probably do want to get authorization on. And that is one of the earlier, I mean, it's a long document that is in that policy as it exists.
So in going forth?
Going forth, you know, we could consider anything over, I think you said twenty-five thousand dollars, you would have to go through Dr. Owens first, and then Doc Owens would decide to bring it to us or not. And you would be accountable for that?
Absolutely.
Or should it come to us directly?
Several of those changes, like the mats and everything, are still under the twenty-five thousand. So would that satisfy everybody?
I think if it's, if it's money we're looking at, and I think, I think Mr. Dooley would know at this time, what, I think the word he used contentious, what is and what might not be. I think anything like that is below twenty-five thousand, he should come to the superintendent. Then we can, we can bring it to the board, you know, if we get to that point.
So there was a problem with the floors, why they were asking for additional wrestling mats?
Problem. It was, it was an elevation. Do you want to speak to that? Well, catch me if I miss a piece here then, but the, that the elevation in the wrestling room floor, if they went and put the mats that were designed where they would, were supposed to be, due to the fact that there was a change from that being a dance studio rubberized floor, ended up being down another inch and a half. So it was, how do we solve that problem? Okay, so a couple of options went back and forth with the school and the athletics department, and it was, well, if it's going to be a wrestling mat, if it's going to be a wrestling room, it would be safer for athletics to just put an extra, for wrestlers, to put an extra inch and a half of material, whatever the thickness is of that, for thirteen thousand dollars. I think that's what that change order was, but that seemed like that's what they wanted. So I look at that and say, that seems like that's approvable, easy within, like, I wouldn't even call the state on that. And that's a pretty low amount for a change order threshold to me.
Yeah, Mr. Dooley, I think we trust that you're doing a good job in looking out for, you know, fiscally responsible and doing good calls. And we don't want to hamper your progress in completing this at all. It was just when it came up, some of these large change orders, and I guess it was before your time. So don't want to hamper the progress, but maybe going forward, we can do that just to complete this, that we do institute a threshold of twenty-five thousand dollars, and then maybe even change your policy in the future, which we don't have to do now, and maybe not before the full board, but before the superintendent and the president of the board, and then you can bring it to us as needed to get this project done. So I guess I would like to make a motion that going forward, that we have to have any change orders over twenty-five thousand dollars that they're brought to the superintendent and the board president.
I'm not offended by the questions, and I like the fact that our board has your pencils sharpened, and you're all pretty sharp minds, and that you're questioning all this. That's a good thing. Like, I'm not intimidated by that, maybe a little nervous about it sometimes, but that's, that's just part of the healthiness of what this process is supposed to be. So please keep doing that.
Thank you.
Well, we have a motion on the table, folks. I need a second.
Before we second it, can we discuss it a little bit further in that, again, there is a difference between a change order that is for a contractor that is doing it and a change order that is requested from the school. So I can see the twenty-five, maybe the twenty-five thousand dollars for the contractors. I don't know that we may need to change that threshold when it comes from, from the school's request. Because to be honest, Because to be honest, I don't think any of us on the board realized until the committee meeting last, whenever it was, that we had staff that would go to Mr. Dooley and, and talk about what they need. And then he would in turn take it to Mr. Cowan for a, a price on it. So I think at that point in time, anything that comes from the school, their request automatically comes to the board.
I think I can address that. So there's our owner requests and us, our own requests. And I, I think what we have done internally is, is scrutinize those, I believe, are those owner requests something that can fall outside of this? Because they should be more minimal than something of the construction nature. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
And I think you, and I think you had stopped any progress on most of those owner requests about a month ago, just because staff is in, they're seeing things that could be better within the school and have made some requests, and they were just stacking up, as you said. So I think if we stop all those to, to even come through the executive committee and ultimately the board, the owner request, just what you're talking about, Mrs. Wright, I think that would suffice.
Dr. Owens, if your schedule permits, maybe once a week before any change orders get approved, because at that point, it's probably going to be five of them. I could sit down and, and within five minutes run down them real quick with you. And then you could say, ah, maybe that one we need to kind of hold off on, but the other ones seem to be pretty straightforward.
You have a motion on the floor still. Do we want to take a, do you want to amend that motion, or do you want to keep the same motion?
No, I can go ahead and amend that. And your amendment was, help me out here, is that, I'm not sure what it is right now, is the meet with you? Okay, so on. So owner change orders reviewed weekly, but otherwise, uh, motion stands.
And that motion original was?
Originally it was, any change orders greater than twenty-five thousand dollars will be brought to the superintendent and the board president.
Do we need a threshold, or do we need it just flat across the board?
Well, I think my original and what Mr. Dooley was saying, that if he had every single threshold, that he wouldn't get his work done. So, and that's why I think the threshold was originally a hundred thousand dollars. But twenty-five sounds a little bit more reasonable, maybe now, in the tail end.
So you went to twenty-five thousand dollars on the contractors?
No, just twenty-five thousand dollars. If anything's over twenty-five thousand dollars is a change, just bring it to our attention. And it, it's not necessarily to the board, it'll be to the superintendent and the board president.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Please, all board.
Mrs. Briggs?
Yes.
Mr. Cathel?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Dr. Parsons?
Yes.
Mr. Peden?
No.
Mr. Steele?
Pass.
Epstein?
Pass.
Oh, pass, okay. Ms. Taylor?
No.
Ms. West Warner?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Wright?
No.
Four yes, three no, one abstention, and one pass.
That's a pass.
So the pass goes back to more.
Pass to back to me.
Oh, pass, can say.
I'm going to say yes.
Okay. Okay, that's five yes, three no, and one abstention.
Anya, that was for the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold for change orders.
I missed the whole discussion because I had an emergency at home, which is why I abstained, so.
I just think with where we're at, it's important for all things to go through Mr. Dooley, Dr. Owens, and then come here. I would like to have no threshold of twenty-five thousand on contractors' change orders. I would just like that process to be in, in place from now on out, being that we're at the end of this process, and we are thinking about perhaps holding some monies for future demands on building and grounds.
So you're saying no threshold, just all change orders?
All change orders that are contractors' change orders, not the owners.
So the owners come anyway?
That is my motion.
No, the, the owners are us, and those are staff coming to us saying, hey, I've got computers, I don't have enough drops in my room. Those are, you know, are, right? A football shed. The contractors are your welders, your electricians, plumbers that are actively working in H wing right now.
Is that, is that manageable from your family?
Well, here's the thing. So Mr. Blommer, just say.
So let me, let me bring something up. Good evening, everyone. I fully understand where this is going, and I, I support, everything should be reviewed in order. I appreciate everyone taking a look at that. The problem is with, with this is, is if we have a change order come through, and it goes through this process now where it's no longer a limit for Mr. Dooley, that change order will now take a month to get through, because it has to go through board, it has to be approved. So if it's a simple five thousand dollar change order, it's a month to get it done, which could hold up work being done.
Maybe had a change order price go up.
Yes, some, some materials right now do have a two week time limit on it. Where if it's not agreed upon in two weeks, that, that change order will go up in cost for materials. So the, the reason the original call or the safeguards were put in place, the fifty and a hundred, were to allow progress to continue. And yes, I do agree now that we, now that we're in the end of a project, a new building is opened, we're into H wing now and doing that. I don't really see any bigger change orders coming through unless alternates are brought back into it all of a sudden. And I don't know, and I apologize for not knowing everything that's going on in here. You know, Brad is taking over the job full time now, and I'm kind of just sitting back watching to make sure, I still pay attention and come to the meetings and everything to make sure I can speak. But that being said, that, you know, we, we just need to be careful with how we word it, because if changers are going to take a month, then work stops.
I don't want that, that's for sure. So thank you for helping me understand. I just want to make sure that whatever the needs are for the contractors, you know, that of course they get done what they need to get done.
And those, and those also are thoroughly vetted in-house by all of us. Brad takes a look at it, I take a look at it, we make sure that everything is in line.
But once everything's vetted through you, then it goes to Mr. Dooley, correct?
Goes to the architect.
The architect, then it goes to you? When does it hit you, Mr. Dooley?
Third.
Third, then it comes to you, then you go to Dr. Owens?
Well, the proposal, I mean, when that comes to me, yeah, I would meet with Dr. Owens, maybe just be able to run down all the change.
And then it can?
And then he'd say, well, that one maybe is a little contentious, maybe we want to bring that one to the board. You know, that's why it's a second set of eyes.
And then when it comes to us, it's pretty much already been done. We're just the final, final approval. Is that, am I understanding it right?
Or the notification change, yes. Now, anything that's over the limit, you have, there's none of them, anything over a hundred and fifty. They don't like the, the building and the H wing renovations, those larger ones, like the three hundred fifty some thousand dollar change order. That, that wasn't approved until you approved it.
Thank you for explaining that, because I wasn't really understanding the process, and I definitely don't want to hold up, but I want to be careful in what we're doing.
It's confusing. I reread it, I can tell you, it's a strong follow.
So I would like to see us consider, again, any contractual change order that comes through to be able to be approved based on the pass. We can, the limit can stay as it is right now, subject to change through policy. However, any change order that comes from our, from within our own, needs to come to the body, needs to come to the board. So I will make a motion that we allow the change order policy to stand for our contractors. But any other cha, any other change order that comes about from within has to come to the board.
And I just want to say, because right now, the change order threshold is a hundred thousand dollars. So that does not have to come before anybody. So that's why I was saying, well, let's make it at least twenty-five thousand.
Orders are because, you're right, the change orders says that right now. But this motion is saying change orders that have to do with contractors, which means our electricians, whoever, uh, or by Johnson contracts with to do it, those changes can still go forward, because they are a need from within that contractor, like they're going to say. But if, for example, electrician, and all of a sudden, they, they contracted or they contacted electrician because they wanted to change light sockets from here, there, that's an hour change. That's not a change that gets approved, that comes to the board. If it is, they need twelve inch beams, like I know what I'm talking about, twelve inch beams somewhere else, then we're at their mercy to say that's what it is, because they're the contractor. And then our Y Johnson would take that responsibility.
So I retract my motion now that I understand. I think we have a new motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Can I hear that motion again, please?
The motion is that the thresholds for the contractors remain.
At a hundred thousand dollars.
And that's fine at that point, if, if that's it, I'm okay with that, if, so that doesn't stop production.
So that's for the bricks and mortars, the actual building?
But for any change orders that come about from within, they have to come to the board before.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
All board, please.
Mrs. Briggs?
Yes.
Mr. Cathel?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Dr. Parsons?
No.
Mr. Peden?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. West Warner?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no, zero extension.
And Mr. Dooley, I would think probably that hundred thousand dollar threshold, I would say probably anything around that twenty-five mark might be contentious. You want to talk to the superintendent, just to make sure.
Dr. Owens and I will meet weekly and go over everyone, just to be double sure.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Now, respectfully, we still have six point oh seven, the change order notifications on tape.
Now, do I have a, do I have a motion on six point zero seven?
I make a motion to approve six point zero seven.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Yeah, exactly. What are we approving?
You're just approving that what they presented to us beforehand, and they follow the policy at this point, and we're, we just have to set our approval that, yeah, we, we approve them. Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion passes unanimous. Old business, seven point zero one, Major Capital Planning.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. The interior punch list work continues on the new school. The weight room equipment shop drawings are currently being prepared. Interior, interior signage shop drawings are being reviewed. Exterior sign bids are due October fourteenth. Final site work continues around the exterior, and work continues in the H wing, uh, which is the former B wing. We're able to tour that, uh, in process last week. Lot happening there, they're transforming that whole area. Groundbreaking for the ag and maintenance building will occur next month. And our executive group continues to meet monthly to explore cost savings, construction alternates, project obstacles, and again, board members are invited to those monthly meetings. Uh, we also typically try to do a tour. It's kind of nice now, we do have kids in the building, staff. Last month, we were able to tour the cafeteria in progress. Um, so much, much different than the previous school. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on, committee reports, eight point zero one, Ms. Wright.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Steele. We met on Monday, September the eighth. We discussed the major capital improvement project update. Mr. Brad Cowan was in attendance and gave us the update on Sussex Central High School, that it's all but complete. There's a very small percentage of things that need to be taken care of. And then H wing is the renovations that are in the process now. We discussed at length the same change orders that we discussed here this evening. We discussed the logo for stairwell number five. And as you heard tonight, that is being, um, going to be looked at, which I think is a good idea to see if we have students that can do it for us at a more reasonable cost and gets the recognition for that. On the, uh, work orders, we've reviewed those, they are progressing along well. There are some that are on there that have been there for a while that we're looking into to get those completed. The futures committee, which is a committee that was assigned to see what we were going to do for this building, uh, and they won't resume meeting again until December. Under new business, we discussed the George Washington Carver front sign replacement that was taken care of this evening. We did, we, then we had a discussion on furniture disposal. And that is because at Sussex Central, the high school got all new furniture. We had furniture that was left over from there and from the trailers that is being stored in pods that are costing us. So we are now going to have all that furniture brought to, to this building right now and organized in one or two or however many classrooms. And then we will move forward with seeing how we can dispose of that. Also, I, we had had a discussion before about some of the schools saying that they had excess equipment or equipment that was not usable anymore. We're going to ask that, uh, they do an inventory and let Mr. Dooley know what is there, whether it's furniture that can be brought here so we can have a central location, what, whether, and then we're going to find out at some point in time whether or not we can donate that furniture, uh, because the state, the equipment, state, state surplus, supposedly is not interested in it. So keep an eye, if it is such a thing as we can do that, we'll be able to advertise it wherever we can. But keep in mind, if there are schools or there are teachers that need some of this stuff, once it gets here, uh, we would give you the opportunity to come, or your principals to, opportunity to come to look at it to see if it's something that you could use in your school. And then after discussion, we had a discussion tonight about the approvals and the change orders. And that said, in our next meeting, we'll be on October thirteenth here at five P M.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Conferencing school safety, Mr. Cathel.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. So I did have the opportunity to stop by Indian River High School today. I talked to Mr. Williams, our constables and S R O, got a little bit of feedback on the implementation of our weapons detection systems. They let me know that it's going very well. They said it's been a little bit labor intensive with a, needed a lot of help from a lot of faculty and staff. Um, said they have been great coming in early. I'm sure our staff at Sussex Central's been just as helpful. I just wanted to thank all of our staff and students for making that work, and hopefully that's going to continue to improve. So, thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Peden?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Furman presented a request for Indian River High School to use the black military appreciation uniforms for the upcoming football game. These uniforms were previously approved by the board, and the school will use the uniforms they already have, and there is no cost to the district. Mr. Steele conditionally approved due to the timing of the game this year. Ms. Wolf presented the proposed fiscal year twenty-six salary scales for constables, investigators, and student advisors. Earlier, the board approved to table this, uh, to get more information. Mr. Shifano presented alternatives for changing the constable and investigator scales. The committee recommended researching what other districts are doing and possible forming a smaller committee to address compensation. The salary scales will be presented to the board for action. The fiscal year twenty-six preliminary budget items were tabled until the October meeting. And Ms. Wolf reviewed the August thirty-first, uh, financial reports, and these reports will be taken to the board as action. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Peden. Uh, Mr. Neal is not here this evening. We'll now have our committee report, and I believe that's going to be Dr. Jones. Thank you, Mr. Peaton. Uh, Mr. Neal is not here this evening. We'll now have our committee report, and I believe that's going to be Dr. Jones and Dr. Dolman or Ms. Dolman.
Good evening, everyone. We are here to share with you the academic achievement data that we shared at the curriculum committee meeting in September. You should have copies of of the slides in front of you. Um, we also have them displayed here. If at any point you have questions, please feel free to ask.
Good eve, good evening. So we're gonna start with our third grade E L A state assessment data. And so in front of you, you will see the overall percentage of students who are proficient um, on the E L A portion in Delaware, which is on your um, far left, I R, which is the Indian River School District as a whole. And then each of our elementary schools, John M. Clayton, East Georgetown Elementary, Long Neck, Lord Baltimore, North Georgetown, Philip Shaw, and then S D S A. We've also included the data throughout the year. So you'll see that that turquoise color is two thousand nineteen, the yellowish is twenty twenty two, purple is twenty three, red is twenty four, and the green is twenty five. So as you look at this data across time, keep in mind that the state um, gives us the data on proficiency levels. And we're comparing apples to oranges. So that group of students, that cohort of students changes each year. So um, what would be, they don't necessarily share the growth because um, they look at proficiency, but we can at some point look at how students have grown from third grade, the same students to fourth grade to fifth grade and so on. Um, so that is the um, proficiency of our third graders across time. And then on the next slide, you will see the same order, and it will be fourth grade on our E L A state assessment. And then on the next slide will be our fifth grade E L A state assessment data. As we continue looking at elementary E L A, we also um, look at our disaggregated data across our um, district. So you will see third grade E L A disaggregated data. And so same colors for the years, but you'll see all students. And then we look at our Hispanic students, African American, white, special ed, low income and M L. So what we want to keep in mind here, that students can fall into multiple categories. So a student could fall, all of them fall in the all. But then we could have a student who falls in the African American, low income and special ed. So they would impact each one of those cells. So there you have third grade, and then on the next page, we have fourth grade broken down by our subgroups. And then on the next slide, you would see our fifth grade broken down by the subgroups for E L A.
So the next slide transitions us into the middle school grade levels, which is sixth, seventh and eighth grade. So on that very next slide, you will see sixth graders. And the colors are the same for the years with the state of Delaware on the far left side, the Indian River School District is next. Then you have Georgetown Middle, Millsboro Middle, Selbyville Middle, and S D S A is on the far right. The next slide shows you seventh grade, same order of schools. And then eighth grade. On the next slides, you will transition into the disaggregated data, subgroups, just as Mrs. Dorman shared with the elementary. We have all students on the far left, followed by Hispanic, African American, white, special education, low income and M L from two thousand nineteen to our last spring twenty twenty five scores. Next is seventh grade. And then finally, eighth grade for rating.
Okay, we're going to move into elementary math. So the first group you're gonna see is our third grade, um, and it goes in the same order. Again, it's Delaware on your far left. Um, Indian River School District, and then each one of our elementary schools, um, and the colors remain the same across the years from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty five. So there is the third grade math state assessment results showing the percentage of students that we have proficient. On the next slide will be our fourth grade math state assessment data, same order. And then our fifth grade on the next slide. And then again, we break it down and we look at our disaggregated data on the next slide. And so we have our third grade math, um, broken down by our subgroups. Again, two thousand nineteen on your far left in that turquoise color, all the way to two thousand twenty five with all students, Hispanic, African American, white, special ed, low income, and then our M L students. Next slide will be our fourth grade math state assessment data broken down by our subgroups. And then our fifth grade broken down. So now we move into middle school math, starting with sixth grade on that next slide. Same order, state of Delaware, then the whole district, and then schools in order Georgetown, Millsboro, Selbyville and S D S A. Followed by seventh grade. And eighth grade. Then we move into our disaggregated data for middle school math, starting with sixth grade. Again, these are your subgroups of students. A student can fit multiple categories. Excuse me. And we have seventh grade. And then eighth grade math. Hey, on our next slide, we have our science assessment data in the elementary level. We tested at the fifth grade level, and so you can see our overall proficiency in science. Same order as far as Delaware on your far left, all the way to S D S A on our far right. And with the years two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty two, twenty three, twenty four. Um, included on here as well. So you can see our uh, percentage of students who are proficient in science. Fifth grade is our tested year. And at the middle school level, eighth grade is the tested year in science. And so you'll see that data next for our four schools that have middle grade levels. When we get to high school, it is a tenth grade end of course assessment for biology. So that data that you see for the high school is for that one course. And then that takes us into our S A T data for um, the state testing window in two thousand twenty five. These are our eleventh graders. Um, Delaware is one of just a few states that continue to test all students in the S A T. Um, another state recently dropped out, so I believe our number is that there are eight states right now that are the only states that test all students on a statewide testing day. So in English Language Arts for eleventh grade, um, that first slide that you see is a breakdown of the state of Delaware, our district as a whole, and then both of our high schools. The slide after that is specific to Indian River High School, and this shares Indian River High's demographic subgroup data performance. And likewise, the slide after that is specific to Sussex Central High School's performance. Which then takes us into S A T math performance for eleventh graders. And the first slide for math, once again, is a state and district comparison as well as both high schools. Followed by disaggregated data for Indian River High School only. And then the last math slide is for Sussex Central High School's um, disaggregated data. Okay, on the next slides, we have at the elementary level our DIBELS data. And DIBELS is a screener that we give students at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and at the end of the year. It's a screener that we use to see if students are on track to become proficient readers. And so we analyze that data as school teams, but I wanted to share with you at looking at this slide, kindergarten and first grade. So this is the district as a whole. So you can see at kindergarten, beginning of the year, we had eighteen percent of our students who were at or above grade level. But by the end of the year, we had sixty one percent of our students at or above grade level based off of our uh, DIBELS screener. First grade, beginning of the year, when we screened our students, they were at thirty two percent who were at or above, and by the end of the year, we had fifty nine percent of our students at or above grade level based off of that screener. On the next slide, it will be our second and our third grade. And so you will see second grade district as a whole, forty two percent of our students were at or above grade level. By the end of the year, fifty three percent were at or above. In third grade, forty six percent were at or above grade level, and at the end of the year, fifty two percent were at or above. And then on the next slide, we have our DIBELS results for beginning, middle and end for fourth and fifth grade. And you can see our fourth graders, beginning of the year, were at forty five percent. At the end of the year, they were forty seven percent, and fifth grade was at forty percent at the beginning of the year. And by the end of the year, when we gave the screener, there was fifty four percent at at or above grade level. On the next slide, we um, we also administer our students the access or the WIDA assessment to our M L students. In order to um, be proficient, you have to have a four point seven or higher overall proficiency. And so um, if you look at the next slide, you will see our schools are listed. Um, in the first column, you will see the number of students that placed out, and then we changed that to a percentage. So for instance, John M. Clayton has a hundred and thirty eight M Ls who were tested, thirteen of them placed out. So that's about a nine percent that were placed out of um, M L based off and services based off of these WIDA or access scores. And then on the next slide will be based off of WIDA and the access growth. So you can see the grade level is listed on the left and our schools are at the top. So for instance, in grade one, though not all the students tested out, John M. Clayton showed growth, sixty two point two, three percent of our M L showed growth based off of our um, WIDA that we uh, give the students. So you can see each grade level and each school. So this, uh, that takes us into our secondary access scores, um, a four point seven or higher exits a student from services. Um, so you have two different slides. You have the number of students who exited from services. We monitored those students for two years, and if at any point they start to decline in their academic abilities in the core classrooms, then they can easily be brought back into M L services and um, given another opportunity to to exit out according to the criteria. The access and a WIDA um, actually measures all four domains, speaking, listening, reading, math, writing. Um, and students would have to score an overall proficiency of four point seven. This is given to students no matter the amount of time that they have been in our school system. Um, and if they even did not have formal education in their home country, they are given the assessment, same with smarter balanced. So with that being said, um, you will see on that next slide, sixth, seventh and eighth grade by school is at the top left of that chart. And then our high schools are on the bottom right for nine, ten, eleven, twelve. So Kelly and I wanted to take a moment and and talk through some of the things that we're doing this year. We also want to thank everyone who attended the curriculum committee meeting. We had great conversation at that meeting, got um, ideas for doing quarterly data reports to the board. So we are currently collaborating on what that will best look like, um, so that we can bring it forth to you. Um, but at this time, these are things that we currently are implementing with our schools. So um, one of the things, just to give you a little background, um, at our admin institute, when we meet with our school leadership teams, we review this data, but schools are then also um, required to meet as school-based teams, and they develop school success plans. And that requires them to look at the data in order to make decisions on um, how they're going to move forward and set goals based off of the subgroup data, their levels of proficiency. And so as we've worked with them, we've talked about being consistent, and you'll see that on our document coherent and and building a sense of belonging. So if we focus on the consistency, it's about ensuring that all of our students have access to tier one and good instruction. And that happens through our principals doing um, learning walks within our classrooms, providing um, feedback to our teachers and staff through D T G S S. And input, making sure our teachers are implementing our H Q I M or high quality instruction material. I know at the elementary level, we're very fortunate because as a district, we've invested in um, core knowledge, language arts, or C K L A for our E L A. Bridges for our math, and we have amplify science for our science. Social studies, we still continue to use what has been given to us by the state. Um, but we do monitor the use of our H Q I M because it does align to best practices and the research. For example, with C K L A, we've recently adopted that. We've gone into our third year, but that aligns to the science of reading. So we know that in K one and two, we have a more systematic approach to teaching our students how to read. And so over the last couple of years, we've been able to provide targeted P D to our teachers so that they have the skills that they need in order to implement it and provide our students with the skills that they need to become proficient readers. We also have worked with our um, school leadership teams and our principals around making P L Cs or our professional learning communities, data-driven. Um, looking at assessments that our students take and making instructional decisions in real time about what students need. So we can address those needs before we get to a summative like the D E S A assessment. Because at that point, it's too late to make any changes. So we are working with them to analyze that data and to make informed decisions.
So at this time, we would entertain any questions that you might have or further discussion?
I just thank you for this very comprehensive, you know, overview of the performance of our students. And I just had a quick question. Do you know what the trends are in future assessment for students? What are the trends?
State level or?
Nationally, state.
Yeah, so we continuously hear that the state's examining the assessments that are required as part of accountability. Um, but we currently have a new secretary of ed.
Right.
Um, and fortunately, we were, um, we got a chance to meet her and the governor today at North Georgetown, and they are very focused on literacy across the board, which then means making sure that as districts, we have high quality instructional materials that we're putting in front. So I believe this is going to be their focus. There had been conversations such as changing the S A T as the accountability assessment. That's kind of paused. I haven't heard anything in quite a few months. Um, but we do, you know, as Kelly said, with C K L But we do, you know, as Kelly said, with CKLA, CKLA, we're focused on the science of reading. The new ELA curriculum we're bringing in. Amplify is very text and writing-driven. So we're going to stay focused on that with the state's initiative towards the literacy piece.
Can I just add, I do think it's important that we consider, and this is one of the things that came up, I think, at our meeting, is looking at various data points. And I'm not an excuse maker. I want a hundred percent of our students proficient. And I do think that we'll continue to work towards that goal. But there's other things that we also need to consider, like our discipline data and how that impacts the teaching and the learning. As well as, you know, we're doing SEL screeners three times a year so that we are working on addressing the mental health needs and the social-emotional learning of our students. Attendance plays a key role in how our students perform. So one of the things we did talk about is bringing that information to you as well so that you're aware of what does our discipline look like throughout the year? Because our principals do analyze that on a monthly basis. And then they think about, how can I refine my PBIS or my expectations within the building depending on where their needs are? Also bringing attendance data to you so that you're aware of all the different pieces of the puzzle that can impact teaching and learning within our schools.
And as the administrative teams break that data down, so we're getting, tomorrow starts our process of meeting with building principals to establish their goals based on this data. So as Kelly mentioned, as part of Admin Institute, we had them focus on an all-goal and then a subgroup goal. What is that, where is that gap happening in your subgroup data? So we will begin having conversations with principals now about what they're specifically going to be focused on. And then, of course, how we can continue to support them in that.
Yeah, Lysat, thank you very much. It's a lot of data. And I'm really glad to hear that we're focusing on the science of reading, just like the Secretary of Education stressed today. And one thing she said was, and you're not doing this, but she said, you know, well, we're looking at our kindergartners and then we'll retest them at third grade. Like, we can't do that. We have to do it way more frequently. It sounds like you're already on top of that. So, and I think we talked about, because you would bring it to our attention, like, more frequently, like, what are the updates? And I can't wait to see what the goals are for all of our principals, for their schools, and our students to improve literacy, math, science, all of those. So you really can't improve something until you measure it, and you got to measure it frequently. And it sounds like you guys are on track for doing that. So really looking forward to seeing our students improve in all those areas. And thank you for taking the time and the work to come up with systems and processes and goals and then letting us know and the public know. So thank you for your work on that.
Thank you. We appreciate that and we appreciate the support. We are, I mean, it comes back to Taylor's question of we, we need the internal assessment system because it's not there, right? And so that is a key part of our focus this year in the instructional department. Any other questions?
Are there sample tests anywhere that members of the public can see on the DOE website? Is that?
Yeah, so I can send you specific information, but DOE does have practice tests out for families and any members of the public to see so that you can see what style of questions students are asked. They don't give you many, but they do give you some.
Thank you. Yeah, I the turnaround that you are talking about making with the goals and everything that you're suggesting that you're going to start doing is absolutely critical considering the literacy emergency in the state. I, I look forward to seeing the progress. And also, I think, and I love all the data, I really appreciate you putting that together for us. I, I'm curious, and Dr. Jerns, I think you mentioned tracking the students. I would love to see, and I don't know if this is possible, if you already have this, I'm not suggesting that you create this. But if you already have the, the progress by year.
Or apples to apples, like third graders to fourth grade.
Yes.
So individual school principals and their teams keep that data, we can certainly get that together.
I'm curious.
Any other questions?
Well, I did bring this up last year, but I just want to reiterate it because it was a concern of mine last year. You brought up social, emotional learning. I definitely think we need to be careful with prohibiting students from getting help in their, during their enrichment periods and being forced into social-emotional learning periods and not being able to go to their enrichment, you know, Algebra II teacher geometry during that time because they're forced to participate in the social-emotional learning. They miss out on a lot of very valuable time when they don't get to do that. So I'm hoping we're addressing that this year.
So one thing that we do have to monitor, though, is there is a state requirement around that. So we have to make sure students are getting the social-emotional curriculum. And there are many topics that are required at the state level. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Moving on, eight point zero five, DSBA Board of Directors, Ms. Klein.
The Delaware School Boards Association met on September third. The regular business was conducted. The Secretary of Education, Dr. Cindy Martin, was a guest. And the association discussed preparing a workshop that will be open free to all DSBA members. I have a date for that. It's November fifth, from six to eight PM at Vincenzo's Italian Restaurant. And any interested board members can RSVP at DelawareSBA@gmail.com. The presenters will be NSBA, Bo Biden Foundation, and First State Educate. Some of the, another new business topic was the special legislative session that was called on August twelfth. And Mr. Tall presented a spreadsheet to the board with the bills that had been introduced and passed for that session. Other business included early registration for the NSBA twenty-twenty-six conference in San Antonio, Texas. The early registration for all board members will be coming in October. President Ackerman asked how districts were doing with the startup of the school year. And there was general discussion around infinite campus issues and other concerns. Dr. Lucas indicated that the Chief School Officers Association has been discussing legislative priorities for twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six. There was something for the roundtable discussion. And the next DSBA meeting will be held November fifth, twenty-twenty-five, at the Grey Fox Grill in Dover at six fifteen PM.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Eight point zero six.
Oh, can I ask a question about that? So, Mrs. Klein, I think in one of your documents here, you mentioned that that DSBA talked about a new hybrid model for funding schools?
Oh. Yes. Sorry about that. Just that they had been working on recommendations for the unit funding system, but they're still, the commission is still working that out.
So, thank you. So my question would be for Mr. Parker. If there's a new hybrid model for funding, we may need to look into that to, with our budgeting coming up, to do like a side-by-side, like what the budget is without the hybrid model and then what it would be with the hybrid model. So I'm going to ask you possibly to look into that, sort of side-by-side comparison. So you nodded yes, so thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Klein. DSBA Legislative, Ms. Briggs.
There's no report, but we do meet. That'll be coming up on Wednesday, October first in Dover. Today, Mr. Tall sent out a special education due process training, whereas if you weren't able to go to the boot camp training in July. And that is coming up. It's now live online. So you can still register and complete. This training is required for all school board members elected and appointed and must be completed during the first year of their term as school board members. So look at your, it wasn't sent until today, almost four o'clock, so look at your, for those who haven't had that, that needs to be done. And the only other thing I had as well was the November fifth, Mrs. Klein talked about, the professional development workshop. And that's on November fifth as well, so. I already signed up. So that is my report. Nothing to report.
Is that first? New school board members, so the rest of us that have been here a while have already had that training?
I spoke with Dr. Tall because I was like, I wanted to make sure because he said there was new, there was, it's now been updated. And I thought, do I need to take it again? Because I know Ms. Taylor and I did it in boot camp last year. So if you've taken it, you're, you're set. But if you want a refresher, by all means, you can certainly go through and do the online. But everybody should be good. It's just the newly elected or those appointed.
Thank you.
Have to take that as part of the requirement.
Eight point zero seven, Special Education Committee. Mr. Neal had told me in an email earlier today that he has no report for the Special Education. Policy Committee, Ms. Taylor.
Okay, so we did meet and, and we had, after the approval of the minutes, we had eight policies under review. BCA, Board Organizational Meeting, there were no changes. It was just the normal review cycle. GBCB, point seven, Title IX. We only needed an address change for that one. Then on GCBD, point one, paid leave for birth or adoption of a child, state required edits, no changes or edits requested. Therefore, we're going to proceed with the first reading at this board meeting. JE, attendance, policy was updated to reflect a change in the number of days allowed for students to submit notes. No additional changes or edits requested, therefore, tonight, we'll proceed. JF, students' rights and responsibilities, policy was updated so that it was more concise. There was no changes to the overall content and no other edits. Therefore, tonight, we'll proceed with the first reading. KG one, point one, Ingram Pond, this was a normal review cycle, no changes. KGB, public conduct on school property, that was normal review cycle, no changes. And KG, community use of school facilities, normal review cycle, no changes. So these will all move on to second readings at the next board meeting. And we adjourned at four fifteen. Our next meeting is October thirteenth, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Eight point zero nine, Community Advisory Board.
Dr. Wist, any advisory board update this evening? Thank you.
Eight point one zero, IREA Representative.
Good evening. Blair Catman Brown, school social worker at Selbyville Middle School and IREA president. The school year is up and running, just barely, but we are surviving the transition to infinite campus. I'm sure there'll be grumbles along the way, but we're getting there. Overall, we're happy to be back in front of students. This past week, I had the honor of being on the selection committee for the Citizen Budget Oversight Committee. It's my understanding that we had the largest pool of applicants for the CBOC that we've ever had. And it was a great pool of applicants, and we were excited with who we were able to pick. Just as the public is paying attention to our finances and eager for us to find shore footing, so too are our IREA members. As taxpayers or tax payments come in, we ask that the board establish a clear and achievable plan for our district to find financial footing. Whether that plan utilizes referendums that our state laws set forth as a normal part of school district finances or some other creative solution, we need to know the plan. Our members have gone years without even receiving a cost of living increase. If our district continues to operate in a manner where zero percent is a standing offer to staff, we will cease to be sought out from educators in the state looking to land in a district for the entirety of their career. Once a plan is established, it must be shared with our staff, with our students, or with the families of our students and the broader community. We need to know that there's a realistic, well-thought-out path out of this current situation. I know that I risk sounding like a broken record on this topic, but for better or worse, state law puts school finances, including regularly scheduled referendums, squarely on your shoulders. And finances dictate everything from salaries to programming to materials for our staff and our students. Our members look forward to hearing clear, achievable plans for financial stability in the coming months so that we can take a deep breath, release this tension and fear that we have been holding on to, and fully focus on the work of educating our amazing students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Yeah, I have a question about that. So the CBOC, is that under the IREA or is that separate?
No, it's not.
Yeah, I was just one of the members of the selection committee with some members of the public.
Thank you.
Nine point zero one, Superintendent's Report, Monthly Activities.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. My full activity list is attached in board docs, I would like to say. Certainly, the highlight this last month was opening our schools for our staff and students to start the new school year. As I visited classrooms and cafeterias and buses, I saw folks entering eagerly, students and staff included, a very good start to the school year. Mr. Kemp, Board Member Cathel, shared our, our new safety measures. Those were unbelievably successful to start the year. We were optimistic but apprehensive to see how those would work, so very, very pleased. So things are off and running for the school year. We're excited. Infinite campus, as Board Member Klein mentioned, is giving us pause on various levels. However, our team is working through those challenges. And right now, at our fingertips is our unit count process, which determines the number of students within our schools and financing associated with that. So our schools are very, very busy, ensuring the accuracy of unit count currently. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Owens. Ten point zero one, Financial Sumories for the Month Ending, August the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Owens, Dr. Jerns. Before I present the financials for August, I'd like to take a moment to sincerely, sincerely thank all of you for the opportunity to serve as the new Director of Business and Finance for the Indian River School District. I'm truly honored to step into this role, and I'm excited to begin working alongside all of you and our team at the district's level. As a resident of the district and a parent with children currently in our schools, I've seen firsthand the strength and quality of our educational community. I'm committed to doing everything I can to support and maintain the excellence of our district is known for. Thank you again for your trust and confidence. And now on to the August reports. On the board doc tonight, you should have part one, the financial summaries document. As of August thirty-first, we are through seventeen percent of the current fiscal year. Our revenues so far, we have received just over a hundred and twenty-six million dollars in total revenue. Included in that is the total of six point four million in discretionary revenue. And our tax receipts so far are two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We've also received a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars of interest income. Our expenditures so far for the year are just over twenty-nine million dollars. And that includes ten point, just over, uh, ten point seven million dollars of discretionary expenditures as well. Out of the tuition money available, we've spent four hundred and sixty-six thousand, and the Howard T. Ennis expenditures total three point one million. The rest of this report is year-to-date expenditures by account code.
Yeah, entertain a motion to approve the financial summary, month ending August thirty-first.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Detailed information for month ending August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
All right, the next document you should have is part two, the detailed information. On here, we want to highlight the Student Activity Funds Balance is a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. In federal funds, we have available three point five million. In donations and internal accounts, there is one point four million available.
Any questions?
I do have one question on safety and security, because we had a discussion earlier in exec session about funding. We're in the, we're in the negative on that.
Yes, we have not yet. That time, I think we're getting seven hundred and seventy thousand approximately. And at the time that we proceeded to run, we will actually have to pay back two hundred and fifty thousand. And then this will And then this will also become top.
So right now, we are borrowing on our safety and security.
And just to be clear, that would be primarily once our tax receipts come in for our local monies, that's when we'll get the additional funding for those. Any other questions? I want to entertain a motion to approve the detailed information report.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ten point oh three, Major Capital Improvements.
Okay, the next document in your package should be the Major Capital Improvements Report. So far, we have paid out approximately $2.3 million in major capital improvements this month.
Questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the Major Capital Improvements Report.
So moved.
Second.
Have the motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's unanimous. Minor Capital Improvements.
Okay, and the final document you should have will be the Minor Capital Improvements Report. Out of the allocations available for use, we have spent and encumbered 3.3 million dollars and have a total of 1.3 million dollars available to us.
Questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the Minor Capital Improvements Report.
So moved.
Have a second. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
So we would like to, the next two items, 10.05 and 10.06, we'd like to request to table those since this is only my sixth day here. Kathy and I have met and we will be having preliminary budgets ready by the next finance committee meeting in October.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to table 10.05 and 10.06.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Parker, just a quick question. Are we going to change the format and how you present this in the future?
Yes, that is on my list of things to review and hopefully improve upon.
Thank you. Thank you.
Communications, Dr. Owens.
Ah, yes, three field trips to provide this evening overnight trip by Sussex Central High School's FFA, September 24th to 25th to Camp Barnes. That is their annual chapter officer leadership training conference, and that is funded through Perkins. Next is overnight trip by Indian River High School's baseball on March 13th through 16th to Myrtle Beach. That is funded through their baseball boosters and players. And the final communication is a Sunday trip by Indian River High School marching band. September 28th, Allentown, PA. And that is the Allegiant Marching Band Festival, and that is funded through the band boosters.
Dr. Owens, are we for trips this year? I mean, I'm all about trips for kids. Are we trying to find ways to fund those trips other than through local monies?
Yes, we've limited funding, any trips for staff that are not essential for, you know, students, those, those are funded a lot of times through our federal funding, but any trips that aren't essential, we have, we have halted from this year.
Thank you.
Okay, need a motion for approval.
So moved.
You have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Answers unanimously. Eleven point oh two.
Yes, use of Sussex Central High School's parking lot, Sunday, October 26th by United Church. They're having a trunk or treat event. And because it is on a Sunday, that would require board approval.
Any questions? I want to entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Personnel, 12 point zero one. Personnel Agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Personnel Agenda for September 22nd, except for numbers one through four.
Have a motion on the floor to have a second.
Yeah, can I ask a question before we second? So I just noticed on there, so one, yeah, one through four, it just seems that we don't have a budget yet, so. One, hard to determine if we can afford new hires, but my other question is, there's a significant number of homebound instructors, about 31. And it was, would it be possible to bring some information to the community before the board on what the numbers are, like what the expenses of these homebound instructors and also for what purposes?
Owens, I believe we can do that here.
Yes, we can provide the rationale for students that are on inbound and expenses associated with that.
Thank you.
Okay, have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda with the exceptions of one through four. Want a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I'd like to also make a motion to table number one through four for the Personnel Agenda, September 22nd.
I have a motion on the floor to have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion proves unanimous. Personnel Addendum. Number 12 point zero two. Entertain a motion to approve the Personnel Addendum.
Second.
A motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Contractual Agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Finally, the notification, we do have two retirements on tonight's agenda. We don't take any action on those, but I do want to thank these two individuals and anybody else that comes before us. Anybody can go through an educational career and get to that, that golden time where you can retire. God bless you and congratulations. Okay, moving now into our last public session comment.
No one signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make public comment? Seeing none. Is there anyone online that's signed up? Thank you.
Okay, at this point, 14 point oh one, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Post a perfect, motion passes unanimously.